I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Mackey, welcome, and would you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Ladner.
President.
Councillor Bedison.
Present.
Councillor Amen Smith.
Councillor Amen Smith, present.
Councillor Ray.
Present.
Councillor Conno.
Present.
Alex Brown.
Present.
Bob Higgins.
Present.
Priscilla Arredondo.
Present.
Manny Howdy.
I want presidents. I'll just play.
And myself, and Mackey.
Thank you, Ann. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councillors want to make changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, next then is council comments. First on our list tonight is Councillor Amen Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Much. Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. Send greetings to everyone. I am out of town, as you know, MD Anderson in Houston, and hope to return healthily and happily to all. I guess one of the things that I have two things to say, I just want to say that before I left, of course, I voted, and I understand that the election officials and volunteers did a spectacular job in Silver City, and I just want to send out a thank you and appreciations to all of those. I do want to say that the last time we met on October 13th, we had 147 positive COVID cases in Grant County, and as of today, we have 252 in Grant County. I was just reading some information today about how mask-wearing, hand hygiene, and social distancing really do help prevent infections. And since I'm in a place where infection is really trying to be curtailed, I really want to echo all of our, the mayors and everyone's exhortations and requests to please practice those practices in Silver City. And that's all that I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Conno.
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have very few comments. Tomorrow, at 5 o'clock, there will be a luminaria light up in honor of all veterans at the Sixth Street School. It was being decorated by the kindergarten class, and there will be a drive-by. And this is, and this is what it looks like.
Nice.
So if you have a chance, hopefully, you guys can drive by, or all veterans and all people. I'm glad, so is everybody else, glad that this election is over. It's been a rough, very rough, not just for the United States, but for all of us. There is way too much hatred in America. Let it go. Whoever's gonna win, gonna win, and let's move on forward with it. So congratulations to President Biden, and we have to take defeat like we take victory. There was an article in yesterday's paper about the bike people in Boston Hill. I go up there at least two or three times a week, and I see very, very few people and bikes. I see an elderly couple, a man and a woman. I see a couple of young guys. I don't see them in very the ones, the crews I use mostly. There are some that are down, down toward the southern part. They don't bother anybody, and they do have respect. So if you see them, stop and let them go by. It's very, very simple. Anyway, that's all I have. God bless America, and thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ray. Councillor Bedison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo Councillor Amen Smith's comments, and just to remind everyone that unfortunately, Grant County has another death that was reported yesterday. And whatever we can do to follow COVID-safe practices, wearing a mask, maintaining distance, and not gathering in groups beyond five at the moment, I hope that we will do that so that we can try to get this under control, the infection rate and everything, under control in our area and across the state. So I thank everyone for what they're doing, and I also want to thank the election officials for, really, throughout the state, they've done excellent job of processing the ballots and getting the count out rapidly and quickly. I think sometimes, thankfully, we're a very small state, so we can get those things done quickly. And I just want to celebrate all those that were elected and to congratulate them on their elected status. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Bedison. Any other council comments? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I completely forgot to mention that the past couple of weeks, we have had a couple of people that have passed away, and were very well-known. They were business people. One is Mr. Nick Chavez, a veteran. And now one is Raymond Peralt, and I believe he was the first one to have Kentucky Fried Chicken here. And it was on College and Hudson Street, right at the corner. And yesterday, another well-known individual died. We used to call him Viejito, Lawrence Groival. And he helped a lot of people in different ways. And this goes back into the seventies when we used to play baseball. Was always there for everybody, for all the teams. So I would like to have just a very quick moment of silence, if possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I just want to thank the Silver City Police Department, and I want to thank the police chief for his report and for all the work that they're doing in enforcing the face mask ordinance. And by his report, I think they're making a great effort to do that. So Alex, and Officer Howdy, if you would pass that on to the chief, I sure would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, will do.
Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 13, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Amen Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City of October 13, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Bedison?
Thank you. I second the motion as stated.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councillor Bedison?
Aye.
Councillor Amen Smith?
Aye.
Councillor Ray?
Aye.
Councillor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is public input. Ms. Mackey, did we get any, any public input?
Yes, sir, there was one public input, email for public input from Simon Wheaton Smith, and it was concerning curfews, and it was distributed to the mayor and councillors.
Thank you very much for that. Next is reports. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and council, I included the two reports that we had in the council packet. One was to show the enforcement that we have taken up till the end of last week. That's one of them. The second one is the Business Retention Grant that we have for a total of The grant that I sent you, we've already dispersed in the last three weeks. We've dispersed $252,731.69. I do need to update. We added another one, so now we're up to So we have 96,706 left to distribute. So we've been moving very fast. We put a limit on 10,000 on each of the grants. There are some of them, there are less, but the majority of them have been able to qualify for the $10,000 grant. So I talked to James this morning, and he and Vanessa, at first, I do want to say that James has done an excellent job with this project because he he ended up pulling in the grants and reviewing every one of the applications. This last week, I had Vanessa, the purchasing agent, help them out a little bit so we could keep things moving. But things are, things are moving fast, and we, I, based on the remaining applications that we currently have, we're probably going to be done with the funding by, within two weeks. With that, do you have any questions on it?
Councillor Bedison?
So, Mr. Brown, this is specifically Silver City funds that were awarded to Silver City.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so we, we were awarded the most of any community in Grant County. I believe that the county's a little over 100 and some thousand. There was like 90 some thousand, Hurley was around 70 some thousand. I don't know exactly what the status is in those other entities, but I just did want to keep you guys up on how we're proceeding because it was our, it was our intention to move quickly and make sure that we got these funds out to the businesses that really need them. So.
Just for the public, if you could remind everyone about the award process, there was an application which was reviewed. Was there a team that looked at it? And then also that that's an award that they don't have to pay back. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The applications, you can submit them to the Grant County Chamber of Commerce. They are separating them and reviewing them a little bit. Initially, the review board was reviewing, but once it went through, realized each of the communities had a little bit different rules than each other. We sent the applications directly to the communities. And so that's why James had to start reviewing ours by himself, and then, like I said, Vanessa, purchasing agent, work with them to make sure we could get these moving. And, yeah, I mean, they are taxable ultimately, not gross receipts taxes, but you will get a 1099. So it is, play some of the revenues that you lost throughout the year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Any other questions from the council or comments? Yeah, I want to thank you too, Mr. Brown. I received a couple of phone calls from two small businesses in town that was just elated because it came just at the right time for them.
Yeah, we've heard that from quite a few of the applicants, and, you know, that's why we wanted to make sure we moved quickly, make sure that we helped them out, so they have the money that they need to continue staying open. You know, we don't know what's going to happen in the next few weeks situation, but we wanted to make sure that they had the help that they needed, that we could provide anyway.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No. Councillor Bedison, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. One more question. Our police department will continue to do the responding, of course, to calls for service, but are they planning on any additional going out and doing a focus on any part of town in terms of the businesses and everything?
Yes, we will be doing that. We will be continuing to do that throughout the through the crisis, through the pandemic crisis, we will continue to move on it. Right now, we're using the grant money that was provided through the CARES Act funding. I believe it was like about $196,000 that was allocated towards overtime. That grant was like a 477,000, about 196 was for overtime, the rest was for technology and stuff like that. Yes, we will be using that, that, those funds for targeted enforcement.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, next on the agenda is number nine, a public hearing. And this is for the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1296, request for a zone change, ZC 20-2, from a residential A zoning district to residential B2 zoning district for tracts of land described as San Vicente Block 15 Lot 9.115 acres, San Vicente Block 15 Lot 11.115 acres, San Vicente Block Block 15 Lot 9, oh wait, did I say that already? No, .115 acres. Lost my place, sorry. Let me start over. I'll read the first part fast. Approve slash disapproval, ordinance number 1296, request for a zone change, ZC 20-2, from a residential A zoning district to residential B2 zoning district for tracts of land described as San Vicente Block 15 Lot 9.115 acres, San Vicente Block 15 Lot 11.115 acres, San Vicente Block 15 Lot 13.115 acres, San Vicente Block 15 Lot, Lot 15, Block 15 Lot 15.115 acres, San Vicente Block 16 Lot 1.115 acres, San Vicente Block 16 Lot 2.115 acres, San Vicente Block 16 Lot 3.115 acres, San Vicente Block 16 Lot 4.115 acres, San Vicente Block 16 Lot 5.115 acres. The property addresses are 107, 109, 111, and 113 Dorothy Street, and other parcels, and the other parcels are not addressed. The applicant is Ed Garland. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken below. Then the proponent of the application shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The proponent, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the proponent and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the proponent's case, witnesses in opposition to the proponent's case shall be permitted to testify during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had exporté discussions with persons regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from any party to this case? Ms. Mackey, would you poll each of the councillors?
Councillor Bedison?
Councillor Bedison, no.
Councillor Amen Smith?
Councillor Amen Smith, no, I have not.
Councillor Ray?
Councillor Ray, no, ma'am.
Councillor Conno?
Councillor Conno, no, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who may decide later in the hearing to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please raise your hand so that we can identify you, so that you can be sworn in by the town clerk?
Yeah.
Bob, can you put everybody back on the screen?
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that they speak, since not everybody has a camera turned on?
Yes.
This is Bill Miller. I don't have a camera, but I'd like to be a witness for Mr. Garland.
This is Priscilla Arredondo, and I'm also going to testify.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I will.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, just in case I'm.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Bedison?
Point of order, is Mr. Garland present? If the applicant is not present, how can we proceed?
Priscilla, is he planning to be here? According to my notes, he is.
He was, or he was going to have Bill Miller represent him, which he represented him at the last meeting.
Okay, I will allow that.
I spoke with Ed earlier this afternoon, and he intended to call in. I believe I heard his voice during the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'm guessing he must have had some sort of telephone issues. I'd be happy to speak on his behalf.
Okay, I will allow that. Ann, do you see anyone else that needs to be sworn in, or?
Mayor, those are the names that Priscilla gave me earlier in the day. So I think we've got the ones that she was expecting.
Okay, Ms. Mackey, would you proceed with that, then?
Okay, I sure will. All of those that plan to be witnesses in this public hearing, please repeat this oath. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Priscilla.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony I am about to give
That the testimony I am about to give
in the matter before this council
In the matter before this council
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
Is the truth, the whole truth
And nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you.
Ms. Mackey, would you just quickly go over the names of all of those who have just taken the oath?
Yes, sir. It was Priscilla Arredondo, Bill Miller, and Tracy Bauer.
And Alex Brown.
And Alex Brown, excuse me.
Okay, so only those people who are sworn in will be allowed to testify. Ms. Arredondo, could you present the application for the hearing board's consideration?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councillors. I don't know what happened to my presentation up there. I can just start reading it, though. This is ZC 20-01. It is a zone change for the official zoning map from residential A to residential B2 zoning district, and the applicant is Mr. Ed Garland. In May of 2019, Mr. Garland came in and went over his plans of a tiny home community on Dorothy Street. I also issued addresses for his four parcels. It was discovered by Jamie Embick, the Community Development Director, on or about December 23, 2019, that one of the homes was moved in without a zoning or moving permit. I called him and informed him that he needed to do, what he needed to do, and on December 31, 2019, he submitted zoning permits for all four lots. He did include a site plan, but sizes of the homes were not submitted. He submitted a moving permit also that was stamped "complete" in February of 2020. It was then that we realized the home exceeds the size allowed to be considered a tiny home, which is 400 square feet or less, and his home is 832 square feet. Mr. Manny Howdy, our code enforcement officer, went out and spoke to him about it, and he let him know that, let him know the issue, and that he had to stop development until the issue was corrected. Our town attorney at the time, Mr. Scavron, also sent him a letter, and so Mr. Garland is now in the process of purchasing five more parcels from Mr. Hartley. This will attach all properties involved to the residential B2 zoning district to the north, which allows single-section manufactured homes. It's currently zoned residential A, which does not allow this type of home. He's requesting the change so that he can keep his current home on the property and continue with his development. Ordinance number 1276 defines tiny house as a dwelling that is 400 square feet or less in floor area excluding lofts placed upon a permanent foundation, but does not include structures on chassis with permanent axles or recreational vehicles. The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of 2017, page 3-20, states Silver City is a town of neighborhoods. One of Silver City's strengths has been and should continue to be its neighborhoods, and public policy and planning efforts should continue to support strong neighborhoods. Future planning efforts should focus on neighborhood planning initiatives and the creation of area plans and neighborhood plans to direct future growth for the different areas of the town. Section 1.3.3 of the Land Use Code 2010 states to promote good planning practice and to provide a regulatory mechanism that includes appropriate performance standards for development within the town. After a developmental review of the application, the code enforcement, utility, fire, police, public works, and meters division had no comment. The engineering department stated that, stated to consider some sort of master plan for the development of the lots so the permits do not come in piecemeal. As required by section 6.2.11 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted the 43 property owners as identified by Grant County Tax rolls within 300 feet of the affected area by mail about the proposed zone change. I received a call from Jenny Strohman. She had some questions and concerns with the development, and she opposes the request. Wendy Phillips came in to review the file and ask questions. She was representing a few of the neighbors with concerns. There is a map showing the property of the proposed zone change. The ones that are highlighted blue are the ones that are being proposed. He is only planning to develop the four that are on the west side there, and the other ones, he's not planning on developing at this moment. Here is a picture of the home that's on the property. There's another front view of the property. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the properties, surrounding uses, population forecast, rate of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumption on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the Land Use Code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. It is the opinion of the community development department and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that this zone change meets the following finding. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. This proposed change will stay aligned with the particular purposes of the Land Use Code, specifically purpose 1.2.3, which states to promote good planning practice and to provide a regulatory mechanism that includes appropriate performance standards for development within the town, to encourage a more efficient use of land and public service, and to reflect changes in technology and development.
Is that all of your presentation?
That is, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller, you're representing the proponent.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garland is proposing this zone change so that he could place more of these homes, similar to the one that's already on site in this area. He's identified that there's currently a niche in the market in real estate for Silver City for affordable homes in the below $200,000 price range. That is something that we don't have a lot of. As far as turnkey, you can walk into the door with a... It's something that's affordable. And so that's his intent, is to place homes on the lots that he owns today and provide an affordable option so that folks can own their own homes. I know that there's been some concerns that this would become a trailer park or a manufactured park. That is not the intent of Mr. Garland. He owns the lots that are there today. There is an understanding that we can't place more than one home on each lot. So maximum would be that there would be one lot per home. He plans to zero-scape the lots so that they would be more attractive than the kind of overgrown weeds that is the current situation. And really, he wants to develop this area into something that's both affordable and an asset to the community and the neighbors around it.
Is that your presentation, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll give the counselors a chance to ask Ms. Embick or Mr. Miller any questions at this time. Counsel Amon Smith?
Thank you for responding to my turning on the mic, raising my hand. I was unclear, reading the documents about the proposed sizes of these homes. Are they actually, and I guess Ms. Arredondo could probably respond to this, or perhaps Mr. Miller, are these homes actually going to meet the criteria of 400 feet or less as tiny homes? Or are they going to be larger homes? That's my major question.
They will be larger than the 400 square feet. But they do not meet the current requirements of a tiny home, which is less than four. They will be larger than that.
Follow-up question, do they... Is the intention then to have to be about the same size of the 830 square feet or so that has already been built there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. Thank you to Counsel Amon Smith for asking two of the questions that I was going to ask. A follow-up question on the size of the homes. So in the presentation, Ms. Arredondo, it was about a tiny home community, but it truly is not about a tiny home community, correct?
That's correct. When he first came to us, his project, it was the intention to have tiny homes. And when we realized this home exceeded the size limit for tiny homes, then that's when he had to stop development. But I know that was his intention in the beginning, when he was planning.
Okay, I have some follow-up questions. A single-section manufactured home, does it have chassis with wheels?
Yes.
So this is to change the zone so that it will be now a... For the purposes of being able to place on the property something which is currently not permitted under residential A?
That is correct. You can have a multi-section manufactured home, which can also be on a chassis. It doesn't have to be on a foundation, but this would allow a single section.
So I know the term is single-section manufactured home, but it still is a mobile home, is it not?
It is. Our Land Use Code, we define them as manufactured homes, but yes.
Okay, just a few clarifications. For me, I have additional questions for you. Actually, Ms. Arredondo, I'm looking at the citizen participation report. It doesn't follow along with the report that you just gave, that people had contacted you with concerns. It says none. What concerns, issues, and problems were expressed by the neighbors, none. How will the applicant address the above concerns, issues, and problems, none? Are there any issues, concerns, or problems raised that the applicant will not address? It says none, but according to the report that you provided, there were issues and concerns raised.
So when the deadline was met for the citizen participation report, at the time, I had not received any concerns. But from that time until I did my staff report, which was what I included the other two property owners that had concerns, that's when I added it in there. But at the time that I had the citizen participation report due, I had no concerns at the time.
Okay, so there's no ability to put an addendum onto that. You did it through your report, but there is no wherewithal to be able to put an addendum to materials that had come in afterwards?
No, and generally, we have a schedule for all of our reports that are due. And a lot of times, if I don't get anything reported with my citizen participation report, then I just include it in my staff report, or I reported in my presentation.
Okay, I guess a question I would have, Ms. Arredondo, is whether or not that there were any sort of accommodations made for the fact that there's COVID-19, and the fact that this really kind of strained the ability of people to communicate and to do things during the presence. So deadlines are deadlines, as in the code, but no accommodations were made for potential extension of deadlines due to COVID-19?
Well, I do state that, and I do let them know when I send them a letter, that I will take public input up until 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, so that I can present it. And that's what I've been doing, especially with COVID, because people are not able to come in, or they don't want to come in. So I've been having them either call me or email me. And at this time, these two, one of the ladies called me, and the other lady made an appointment to come in, so...
Okay. And the last follow-up question that I have is... I will have a question for Mr. Miller in a minute. But for you, I guess... I'm trying to figure out what... I wrote this down, and I'm trying to find it right now, so... Yes. Is there a particular reason why the applicant did not act in good faith to contact the community development department prior to moving the current home into the area on December 23rd without zoning or a moving permit?
That I'm not sure of. If Jamie hadn't seen it, I don't know how long it would have taken for him to let us know, but I don't know why he didn't contact us. I know that when Jamie contacted him and told him to call me to pull the permits, he did right away. And it was actually New Year's Eve, which was when she noticed it was the day before Christmas Eve, so... I don't know why...
Can I address that a little bit, from what I understand, how it happened?
Mr. Mayor?
Is this Ms. Bauer?
It is.
You're going to have to hold on for a little while, okay?
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask if Mr. Miller has an answer? Since he's representing Mr. Garland at the moment?
Of course you may ask him.
Mr. Miller, do you have an answer to the question I have about the question regarding the good-faith effort of Mr. Garland to actually go through and to discuss this with the community development committee, I mean, department? I understand that he did rectify it once he was notified, but I'm just wondering about good-faith effort and promises that you have made in his stead regarding the fact that he does not intend to put more than one home on the property, and that he wants to make this community, make this development, an asset to the community?
Speaking to the first portion of the question, I can't answer that completely, as I wasn't present for his initial meetings with Jamie and Priscilla and the community development department. My understanding through communication with those folks and with Ed was that there was a misunderstanding as to the size requirements in the Town of Silver City for a tiny home, and that Mr. Garland had a misunderstanding that a tiny home was defined by 400 square feet or less. And so I don't believe he acted in poor faith, just a misunderstanding of this town's regulations.
Okay, thank you. I'll pick up my subsequent questions later, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Conno?
Between the evidence that was given to the planning and zoning and the staff report, there's actually seven different neighbors that were concerned about this and had objections. I'm just curious as to if any of their objections were removed later, or if they've been dealt with, if they've been discussed with them, or are they still all, all seven of them, are they still opposed to this?
No, all these other concerns were before the planning and zoning meeting, so this is when those were reported.
Okay, I didn't answer my question. My question is, are they still upset about this, or are they okay with it now?
I didn't receive any contact information from them after this, so I'm not sure if they're happy with it or not. But I know a few of them contacted me before the planning and zoning meeting, and a few of them were at the meeting, so I don't know their feelings after.
Counselor Ray, did you have a comment, question?
Thank you, Mayor. So there is a possibility that these tiny homes will be bigger than 400 feet, 400 square feet?
Yes.
Any other, any other questions? Does... Mr. Miller? Do you have any witnesses who have been sworn that would want to speak in behalf of the application?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Does this conclude your case in chief?
Yes, sir.
If you would please remain available for further questioning by the hearing boards, we'd appreciate it. If there are any persons who have been sworn who wish to testify in opposition to this application, please raise your hand or speak out, and when I acknowledge you, then you may testify. Ms. Bauer, is this when you wanted to speak, or not?
No, I'm not in opposition of it.
Okay. So I take it that no one is going to speak in opposition to this? Is there anything else the applicant, or Mr. Miller, wishes to be reflected in the record?
Not at this time.
Okay. Does any member of the hearing board have any other questions or comments?
Yes, I do.
Counsel Conno?
I believe this question will be for Mr. Brown. When we're doing voting for this, is this like when we do alcohol licenses, and we have to vote for it if it's been accepted? Or is this somewhere we legally can vote now?
The recommendation is not to approve it. So you say yes, you're agreeing with the P&amp;Z's recommendation?
Any other, any other question? Counsel Edison?
I have two. Mr. Brown, could you clarify what you just stated?
An affirmative vote by the council is reaffirming the P&amp;Z's recommendation, which is not to approve it. If you voted against the...
It is to approve it, isn't it?
Oh, it is to approve it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. If you vote yes, it's to reaffirm P&amp;Z's decision. So you're saying yes. If you say no, then you're going against the P&amp;Z's recommendation.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I do have one more question. This is to Mr. Brown. In the report that was provided, that was provided to counsel, to the full report, it had the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would ask Mr. Miller to speak if he needs to as well. But first, one of the comments that was made by Mr. Miller was that there was no way that there would be a connection with Dorothy to 180. It was not going to happen. Is this, is this something where Mr. Miller is speaking on behalf of the town?
It's a situation where I believe he's speaking to their intention as to whether to request that that connection be made. As a point, the town has no intention of connecting that street to 180.
Okay, so, Mr. Miller, can you clarify the statement that you made to Planning and Zoning Commission? Was that to the fact that you would not, that Mr. Garland would not be requesting this?
That is correct. Mr. Garland would not be requesting that Dorothy Street be extended to Highway 180.
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render it the decision? Ms. Mackey, would you call each counselor?
Counselor Edison?
Yes.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Ray?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve ordinance number 1296, request for a zone change. request for a zone change. Zone change 20-2 from a residential A zoning district to residential B-2 zoning check for text of land described as San Vicente Block 15 Lot 9.115 acres and we sent the block 15 Lot 11.115 acres. Then we sent the block 15 Lot 13.115 acres. And we sent the block 15 Lot 15.115 acres. San Vicente Block 16 Lot 1.115 acres. San Vicente Block 16 Lot 2.115 acres. San Vicente Block 16 Lot 3.115 acres. San Vicente Block 16 Lot 4.115 acres. And we sent the block 16 Lot 5.115 acres. The property addresses are 107, 109, 111 and 113 Dorothy Street. And the other parcels are not addressed. The applicant is Ed Garland.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion as stated. I think a finding has to be listed in the motion.
Yes, would you read that too, Counselor Ray?
Finding number four.
I'm sorry, who just spoke?
A proposed amendment will not be adversely impact the public health, safety or general welfare and will promote the original purpose of the land use code.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You did second it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Madison?
Nay.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Nay.
Counselor Kano?
Nay.
What is, would you, would you tell us what the votes are, please, Ann?
Counselor Madison, nay. Counselor Amon Smith, aye. Counselor Ray, nay. Counselor Kano, nay. Three nays, one aye.
Thank you. Motion does not carry. Next on the agenda is item 10A, which is unfinished business, which is the approval slash disapproval of executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H2 regarding limited personnel matters to discuss the town manager's contract. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Madison?
Um, okay. Sorry, just want to make sure I get this right. I move that the council go into closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H2 regarding limited personnel matters to discuss the town manager's contract.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kano?
I'll second that motion as stated.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We will take a short recess while the online closed session is arranged. And then when everybody is online, we will go into closed session. The council is back in session. No matters other than those matters included in the motion to go into closed session were discussed. At this time, I will ask the council members for their affirmation of that statement. Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
I so affirm.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
All members replied yes. Next on the agenda is item 10B, the approval slash disapproval of the town manager's contract. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Madison?
Thank you. I move to approve of the town manager's contract.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kano?
I'll second that motion as stated.
Thank you. Any, any discussion, comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Motion to approve the town manager's contract passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
You may.
May, congratulations, Mr. Brown. Thank you so much for the service that you have provided the town and we look forward to the next number of years that you will be serving us. Thank you so much for everything you've done. If you, without you, I think that I mean, we know that people have tried to hire you away from us, but you're steadfast in your loyalty to the town and you and your staff really make our town shine and keep our fiscal health intact. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Kano, did you want to say something? Okay. Next on the agenda is new business, which is the new business 10A, 11A, which is the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1297 to repeal ordinance number 1290 and adopt an ordinance declaring the intention of the town to continue the existence and operation of its local labor management relations board. And further, amending chapter 38, Article 2, collective bargaining, Sections 38-22 through 38-35 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, basically you have already approved this ordinance once. What you see in front of you is the exact same ordinance that we passed last time. But as we worked it, worked through it with the state, their interpretation of the legislation is that the, any changes must be approved between July 1 and December 31st. Because we passed our ordinance, I believe it was made that we were too early. They reaffirmed that the content in our ordinance is fine, but they wouldn't accept it with the date of that we had already made. So we have to go through this to we're gonna, the only thing that's going to change is the ordinance number and the date adopted. That's it. Okay. And it's just to meet their requirements and that's and they would not budge, so.
Any questions for Mr. Brown, comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ray?
Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Kano.
It doesn't matter, you can. Okay, then, um, I move to approve of a notice of intent ordinance number 1297 to appeal ordinance number 1290 and adopt an ordinance declaring the intention of the town to continue the existence and operation of its local labor management relations board and further amending chapter 38, Article 2, collective bargaining, Sections 38-22 through 38-35 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Thank you, Counselor Kano. Is there a second?
I'll second that as well.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray? Counselor Ray? Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. For your information, the final vote on this ordinance will be at our December 8th council meeting. The next item is 11B, which is the approval slash disapproval of resolution number 2020-23, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 and for municipal purpose in the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Council, this is a budget adjustment only to add the grants that we've received. The CARES Act Local Government Grant for 489,000 through 75, the CARES Act Small Business Grant, 359,438, and the Global Fire Prevention Grant of 3100. And then we did overexpend our C2BD grant from last year by $1,400. So we thought we'd just clear that up. With that, so that is the current budget adjustment that we're bringing to you today. I do plan on bringing our budget adjustment in December that would allow us to give the negotiated union increases as well as some exempt employee increases based on the fact that our revenues have been quite, we're about 3% above where we were last year. So we're about 15% above objections. And so with that, I'm very confident that we'll be able to get those increases in. I'm working on them right now. Anita and I are working on them. And we will have them for you at the last meeting. But for right now, we're just doing a budget adjustment for the new grants that we have brought in. Especially considering the small business grant, we're almost done spending it. We thought we better bring you the budget adjustment.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Comments? Do I, Counselor Madison?
I just want to say excellent news about the budget adjustment coming up in December and being able to give those increases.
Yes.
Thank you.
It'd be a lot, much-needed help too in replacing some of the positions as well.
Yes.
My departments have a chance to catch up now.
Yeah.
Anyway, any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Madison?
Move to approve of resolution number 2020-23, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 and for municipal purpose in the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir, I'll second it.
Counselor Ray, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. How do y'all like my gravel? This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Can I take it this time, Counselor Ray?
Have a motion and a second?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Aye.
Any, any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey?
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Thank you. Y'all have a good week and we are hereby adjourned.